Okay.
Okay, we're ready.
We're gonna call to order the committee meeting for March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three at six twenty P M. Dr. Ever.
Evening. Thank you, Madam President. Good evening to members of McGuffey School Board Administration as well as community members that are in attendance this evening. Before I go over the policy, I just want to take a moment again to thank Mike Malanovich. Mike is the Executive Director of Six Months Going here at the Western Air Carrier Technical Center. For not only inviting us, he's done this with all the partner schools, and I think we're either the third or the fourth one that has said yes to it, but also hosting us this evening. I also want to thank, and not in attendance, but his culinary arts school for every meeting that he has here, whether it be for the boards, St. Haynes is a part of, or for the super intense meetings, they always provide food, and always do a nice job. With that, I want to make sure that I thank them. Also, too, tonight was great because we see how this partnership has greatly benefited our school. And Mike said something that struck me. He said, you know, we are part of McGuffey. He didn't say McGuffey. He said, we're a part of your school. And I appreciate that because that's really how we have to see that relationship for our students. There's a lot of great trades that can be learned here, and I love the vision that Mike has presented this evening, also in the past. Again, thank you to Mike and also James, the principal that was also here. Appreciate that.
And for those of you who don't know, we were just talking tonight, we have four McGuffey graduates who are currently teachers, instructors here, so.
And last but certainly not least, it does take logistics to move this operations from our home base, the McGuffey High School. So first to our tech guru, it's like Wilson, thank you, Mike, for bringing all this equipment. Mike actually finished a bus run, got into the school van. So that was his transportation side of things, and then I got technology all together the last couple of days in the room and brought it here. So, Mike, thank you so much. Also, Ms. Saber, thank you for also making sure that we had everything we needed tonight, from our agendas to our community reports. So much appreciated. Chief, I appreciate you knowing that we need you wherever we go, and you're here. So thank you so much for that. All right, so this evening, at for first read, all you have four policies on the agenda tonight are going to be a first read. I'm going to present three of the four. The fourth one actually is the procurement cards that Ms. Deb Ingleman has already spoken to you about. And so I feel like there's a need to kind of rehash that, but that is policy that a fourth one that will be for first read. What you see here and what we'll talk about tonight, there are three policies. Two are revisions, and one is a brand new one. So I'll start with revisions. First policy, and you'll have it in the handout there, is policy two oh one. And this again is revision, the admissions of students that was first adopted by the board here at McGuffey, August nineteenth, two thousand and four. The purpose of revision that I propose into the board is to provide administration flexibility in the admittance age and requirements for students who wish to enroll in either beginners, which would be first grade or kindergarten at McGuffey School Streets. Currently, the state regulation, state law, is that a student must be five years old as of September first of the starting school year to go into kindergarten, at six years of age on September first, you go into first grade. And what I'm asking for, and what the policy spells out, is the ability to look at several criteria area. First would be the parent has written notice to us expressing their desire to enroll their child. We actually have one right now within the district at Joe Walker. The student's birthday is on the thirteenth. Off day is the first. So mom has asked us to consider that. Well, first thing to have a policy in place that would allow for us to consider those motions. So first would be that. The second would be that at the expense of a parent requesting this, that they have administered a psychological evaluation, both for mental capacity and also for where they are from. Yes. So we have in this policy here, three steps. Again, written, asked by the parent guardian to that there is an evaluation instrument that is administered by a school psychologist, school certified psychologist, and then finally, the approval of the superintendent. Now, you'll notice on both sections, whether it be for the beginner, first grade, or for kindergarten, this does not in any way, shape, or form take away the ability of the board to say no to it. Nor do we have to always say that we're going to accept someone that's requesting to be admitted at an age that would go beyond the state regulations of September first. But I want the board to consider this and think about, again, as we go through the first read, if there was any questions that you may have or concerns with that, I'd love to have it happen right now.
Do we have very many students in that category?
Typically, no. This would be the first I'm aware of in my short tenure.
Because we've denied people in the past. Yeah, that's what happened. I think it's.
There are other schools that do this.
There are other schools that do this, yes.
That's a similar policy.
Similar policy. So, you know, we're not reinventing. I asked Amy to, once I had the idea, I asked Amy and Andrew's price to kind of look at this from a legal perspective.
And you are not the only school. And keep in mind, in the state law, the compulsory school age. Couple, couple of years ago, I think it was. And that plays a part in that because then you have parents who want to get their kids in earlier as well.
Didn't always used to be that, what, didn't? So I didn't turn six. I didn't have kindergarten. But I was still here, but I didn't turn six until November. I started first grade when I was five years old.
Well, in Pennsylvania, kindergarten is still not legally mandated.
Right, right.
Right. So that's that kind of weird.
Yeah, but we, McGuffey didn't operate for a long time after I started school, but I was always youngest in class. I didn't know we had a policy implemented.
Any other questions? The next policy, again, also revision, also for first read tonight, is policy four oh four. As part of what was just recently adopted, our future rated comprehensive plan, the board adopted and approved in the spring of twenty twenty-two, we, as a district, have identified four priority challenges. That is the focus of our district amongst many for the next three years. And one of those four priority challenges deals with improvement and retention of high quality staff. As we're all aware, not just in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, but across the nation, we're facing, and I don't think it's too liberal to use the word crisis when it comes to really staffing across the board. I'm speaking here about teachers staffing across the board. So one of the things that I'm going to ask the board to consider are two revisions to this policy that was first adopted January eleventh, nineteen eighty-eight, and then revised again on December third, twenty twenty. And first is, in the past, when we interviewed a candidate that had come to us from either a pro pial or private school, we did not have the ability to take into consideration account the years of school service they put into either a private or pro pial when it came to the step that we've started on. So if you had five years, you had fifteen years in a private pro pial school, regardless, according to our policy, we had to start you off with stepping. Okay? If you are in a public school setting under the old policy, every two years of public school service equals one year on stepping. So what I'm asking the board to consider now is to strike the idea that it's only for public, but anyone that has provided school teaching service within private, public, or pro pial school, allow for us to hire the person at step based on their years of service.
Does that include out states?
Out state, yes.
And we've had that discussion of what does it do for the employees that did do this.
And Dr. Oberg and I talked about that, and the big thing is, obviously, you make them an offer for salary, and they accepted that offer for salary, knowing that they weren't getting the package.
Did we have agreements or spot?
I don't.
The second revision to this policy is that we are in a very competitive market, especially when we are talking about our higher level math and science teachers that we wish to retain but also recruit. I can see a future, and it's happened recently with our own backyard, where we may have to hire a teacher at step. Again, I'm thinking high level science, biology, chemistry, physics, and whatever it may be. What I'm asking the board for is consideration to allow me to make an offer for that teacher to bring him on to step wherever they are at. Currently, again, this, I'm not going to talk about the schools, but this happened not too far from us, where a school in Aggie County poached a biology teacher from a school in Washington County, and they were able to pay them nearly twelve thousand dollars more because that school in Aggie County took that teacher, biology teacher, at step. It took them right where they were.
So if this, if a candidate would make fifty-seven thousand dollars at their school, we would look at what step that is for our school to match that. Is that what you're proposing? That's what we're proposing.
But if they were saying they had ten years of experience, we wouldn't give them twelve years.
No.
Of that step, we could move them to our ten year step.
Right.
Oh, that's not what I was asking.
No, that isn't what I thought.
That's not what I meant.
I think that's, yeah.
What I meant was, we start in Washington County, we're one of the highest paid starting teacher positions. Sometimes we're mostly what, the first three years, four years? But once we get into step six, seven, and eight, that's when we're losing our teachers. Basically, I've been told we're nothing more than a training ground for beginning teachers at a fairly competitive rate up until a certain point. I thought what you were saying was, what I asked was, maybe I didn't clarify yet, was that if we have the opportunity to hire somebody who may be a district step ten, is fifty-seven thousand dollars. Our step twelve is fifty-seven thousand dollars. Would we start them on step twelve?
That's what I thought you were.
That's what I meant to be asked.
What I'm asking, okay, very good. What I'm asking for is currently, we do not have that ability. So I don't have the ability to bring them on the step that they're at. What I'm asking for, in the case where we may have to be competitive with another school, if we're having them come to us, is to bring them on the step that they're at.
Since they're on step ten at their school, they'll be on step ten regardless of the salary difference.
Right, okay. If not, if not, we're, when it comes to the, you know, the competitive side of things for McGuffey, we're not going to be even on equal plates. So, again, and I'm really, what I'm thinking here, it's going to be those, those higher level sciences, those high level maps, which happened to a local issue was high level science that they lost due to that.
Is our current financial situation, you can think that's appropriate to do this job?
With the, with, I mean, it's, it's absolutely necessary. I don't know. I don't think we're going to see this anytime soon. But we're right now facing a crisis of finding even our regular slate of teachers. We all know that for two months, we were looking for a special ed teacher, and we had zero applicants just for special education. So it's difficult for me to say that, you know, in this solution, you know, again, I take that into account. If not, we're going to find ourselves limited.
And just to, for clarity, making that allowance doesn't mean you have to. It means that you have discretion if you feel that you, that it's warranted.
I think.
Yeah.
And then the file policy that I have, it's, it's, it's new. So a couple of things about this, we did start a discussion on this in the fall of last year and then tabled it. And I think it goes in line with what Mr. Lucian just asked me about where we are financially. So this is a new policy. It's the policy number nine one three point one. And the, the policy itself does not, and is not intended to either overrule or supersede an existing policy. Just follow me on this. So there's a policy we have currently, it's called nine fifteen. And nine fifteen is our policy that deals with fundraising or contributions by boost organizations, by the PTA and more PTO. So this policy, because I know that was one of our sticking points last time, that there was concern that a sponsorship, an endorsement policy would overstep or take away from the ability of our boost organizations, whether it be athletic intent, PTO, PTA, their ability to do that. This does not dive or delve into that area. However, having said that, I am going to suggest this is definitely something I'm going to ask each board member to take home, take some time with. I know that Mr. Dalton is here tonight, and I'd be maxed in for anything else you want to add. But we've spent some time on this, but if there was ever a time as a district where we need the ability for facilities, for equipment, for uniforms, for things that we're not going to ask an extra burden of our taxpayers to take on, it's having the ability to have someone sponsor a school board. We have a school board currently in our high school gymnasium that from, all my, all my understanding is from talking to Mr. Craig, the bulbs that lighted up do not exist anymore. So if something were to happen to that, it's not going to work. So those are the kind of things we're facing, and what I'm proposing is a policy that allow us to tap into that support from organizations, companies. So all sponsorship, partnership, advertising, ratings, screen fires require approval of this board. I also want to thank Amy Shrimp, who's here with us tonight, from Andrew's Price, but also Russ Lucas. They've really been looking at this for probably the better part of six, seven, eight months going on. And it's voluminous in that they really wanted to make sure that at every level, however you slice a partnership agreement with, with someone, or you brought in someone that was going to provide benefit to our school, that we thought about first, the students, the students in our school, the student athletes, the impact it has on them, the impact it has on our community, and of course, the impact it would have financially for our district. So there's procedures and policies throughout that Amy has outlined. And I'm not sure, do you have anything else that you wanted to add?
I think once they review it, once, and maybe we could discuss, but mostly everyone here knows the original debate topic. Right? Why we couldn't agree like, and they were all very valid. We have to define it.
So I have read the policy, and my question does come back to, again, the boosters and the PTO and the PTA. And while I appreciate that we're saying that this policy isn't going to be used to say against them, but to minimize their contributions, the, my concern is always, we're saying that now, but could it be used by a different administration as such later down the road? Like, what, what are, what, what president are we setting in place at this time? What I don't see in this policy, and maybe we could just simply do it, is a statement that says that this policy isn't going to apply to our boosters and our PTO, PTS.
Well, I could actually say, Ms. Jackson, under advertisement, I try to have language in there. This term does not include traditional fundraising activities. That was sentenced there under the first definition, but we could even add, as governed by policy, nine fifteen right there and make it very clear. I would appreciate that. I tried to make that language clear, but sometimes my language is.
Well, you know, and sometimes I think, you know, maybe just to put it out there and be that, that literal. I mean, that, that certainly might, yeah, my, my, that's why you're concerned. What does, what about the rest of you?
Well, I think that's a good point because we definitely want to make sure that they know that's not the intent for the rest of them. Drawing funds away from those into the schools, additional things that we're not, that we think we might have in, you know, opportunities.
Right.
They can still do programs and stuff like that, like you call.
Right. I think you're thinking, the party of the permanent versus temporary and, you know, events versus prolonged period of time.
I just think it may ease a lot of our boosters in PTOs.
Because when.
Just to have a statement that says.
When they're reading it, they're looking for that.
Yeah, exactly.
That mentions their safe.
Yeah.
I believe.
And especially as we're entering into a time where we're going to be relying on them more and more.
So similar to like the girl basketball just did in, in the Navy, correct?
Right. They would, they would put their banner up.
And they had different organizations sponsor that.
You would not sponsor, like, I just spent two days at Martha Aggie, and they, they're, everything they have is named after a corporation, like Barrow Centering, Fields, you can't see football field. That's not what we're talking about here.
That's exactly what we're talking about.
Exactly.
I didn't, it wouldn't be a banner, it would be.
No, no, yes, that's correct. That's what.
Well, I think Coach Dalton was talking about the difference between permanent and temporary.
Speaking for a certain duration, five, ten years, whatever the contract is.
Right. But like putting their company name.
More permanent than your example of when they put the banner up and they take it down right after the game. This would be, I can envision our school board in that gymnasium being sponsored by a local organization. It's always going to be up there as long as that school was up there, or as long as we have an agreement to have that.
So we're going to get a baseball field and name it after a corporate.
Well, you can work on that, Ken. But then that, just to keep in mind, that is a first read as well. So I do think that Dr. Oberg is correct. Make sure that you're taking, you're familiar with it. Are we all okay with adding that statement we discussed? Yes, yes.
But also it might make it clear is we just make that its own paragraph there, and then it's just its own little standalone statement that I'll make.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Madam President, that's all I have for the committee.
So it'll be a six forty-one. So at this time, we will close the committee meeting, and we will reconvene for the regular meeting at six fifty.
For those of you in the audience online, I'm just going to mute the signal, and then we will start it back up once they're ready.
Oh. Now I will call to order the regularly scheduled board meeting for March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three at six fifty-six P M. Throw call please. Mr. Haynes.
Here.
Mr. Harden.
Here.
Ms. Jackson, present. Mr. Kern.
Here.
Mr. Lasure.
Here.
The slide park, Derek. Mr. Ross.
Here.
Ms. Shingle, present. Mr. Vanada.
Here.
Please join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the people of it, which stands unconditionally, indivisible, and justous. High School Student Council Representative?
Who's the boss?
Mr. Lewis.
Yeah, he's not sure where to go.
Right here.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, we should have said that for anyone speaking over here in this little gap.
Yeah, my high school student council representative, a lot of her involved in spring sports right now. So Nate's usually in Reed, they're both tied up with some things, and I didn't have anybody else really that was available tonight. So I said I had to. Just a couple of things for a school update at the high school. We had our severe weather drill on March seventh for middle school, high school went very well. Chief Minsky, thank you to him for helping to coordinate it. Mr. Wealth, for in the middle school, for, we do one of those a year in. It's very healthy. Two of them here, I'm sorry. Mock AP tests have begun this week. Up there, we're starting to conduct those over the next four weeks to prepare our kids for that end of year assessment and maximize what students are getting from those programs. Sophomores are going to be taking the PSAT ten next week. So they'll all be getting that, and that's a very key indicator about their progress halfway through high school, where they compare academically with students with the Anarch School, within the state, within national. Like, it gives them a good idea about whether they're following in line with their peers. Because every PSA ten is taken by a tall soldier. The Naughtie will also be administered on, to twenty-seven of our students on April twentieth and twenty-first. That's for our school-based CTE programs, which are general agriculture, agriculture mechanics and engineering technologies. And we have one of our largest groups that we've had take that in those programs, just to show you the strength those programs are, have in our school. Our junior senior prom is scheduled for April twenty-eighth at the Doubletree down here in Meadowlands, where it's right, right? Grand March will be held, high school at five thirty, as always. Our awards day for the class of twenty twenty-three will be held on Wednesday, May thirty-first. That starts to quickly approach at nine A M. in the auditorium, you'll be getting invitations. Term four starts April fourth. So as far as we believe, as far as it is to believe, we're starting to head into the home stretch. Seniors will be attending a career fair, a career fair held at Penn Commercial on April fourteenth. United States Army will be bringing their mobile STEM lab to the high school in May with opportunities to learn more about the science careers offered through the United States military. Our math team is currently in first place with a record of four oh and one against Washington High School, Sharkers, Houston High School, and Trinity High School. So we're still undefeated. We have one tie against Trinity. So they're starting to work towards the next step since we'll win our section, we'll, we'll move on. And Mr. Haley just gave me this here before I left. The Rocket League Tournament was held with teams of the middle school and high school in February to determine which team would represent McGuffey now that we go out against the other schools, the field within IU one. And our players include Landon Padilla, Jacob Harper, Aiden Odell, and Nate Rooks. Today, we beat Sharkers Houston three to zero. So in the first round, so it's a ten-week season, so single elimination to get down to that. Sports update for spring sports, of course, started on March sixth. So we're about two weeks deep. Boys tennis has probably the biggest roster I've, I can ever remember us having, with twenty tennis players here and a, and a very strong core of athletes, drawn some very strong interest this year. Baseball has a good returning nucleus, and off to, they have a very good season, which they've done the last two years. Softball returns most of the team, and I think that we would definitely were a playoff contender this year for Mr. Dalton. Track almost has sixty track athletes now.
Wow.
The high school team between the boys and the girls, and we have an opportunity to make the, the team postseason and some very strong individuals. So, I mean, we just come, we've just come off of one of the most successful winter sports season that I can remember within the last decade, maybe even decade. So, I mean, we just come, we've just come off of one of the most successful winter sports season that I can remember within the last decade, maybe even decade and a half, maybe two decades. Every one of our teams, girls basketball, boys' basketball, wrestling, um, rifle won the section. Like we had. Teams go into the playoffs and sometimes in some ways, uh, wrestling advanced and continue to advance through it. But everybody found success. So, um, you know, I think the spring offers some great opportunities. So athletics are growing very well at, at the high school. And the last one, Lucas Barr, who's a freshman, made it to Hershey to wrestle an individual, um, double A wrestling championships. And next year is expected that we will return the top five double A team preseason.
Thank you. Mr. Benins.
Yeah, a question, what do you think is making the winter sports so good?
I think it's, it's a combination of, I, I think we have, I think we have good coaching. I think we have a good group of athletes right now. They're going there, both boys and girls sometimes. You know, and at, at school, we have five hundred kids roughly. So sometimes you have ups and downs within that. You may have, in some years, you might have five good athletes and, uh, of, of, of men, five good males and, and two good females or something there per class. Some years you're, you're just blessed, you have multiple runs of five and six in the school or size, or maybe even ten combined. Um, I think it's, uh, obviously comes from the kids, it comes from all that offseason work that all these programs do and all of these. That's one thing about our, our coaching staff and, and obviously Mr. Dalton, we're a year-long sports school. That, you know, and then those schools have specialized, like they, they become, they play basketball all year long now. Um, and we certainly, we, another, I think, big indicators that we allow our kids to play multiple sports. They, we don't get selfish with that, right? We, you know, Mr. Dalton encourages his kids to play basketball or wrestle because, you know, especially linemen and things like that, that's, that's a skill set. Um, but I just think we, I think we have, we have good leadership through our coaching staff. I think we have good leadership through Mr. Dalton. I think we just have a set of kids that after going through the pandemic and going through all the times where they couldn't do things, they're learning to maximize what their opportunities are now at a school and that includes extracurriculars.
Thank you.
I think that part of it, kids just relish that more, they, they took that for granted, maybe a little bit before. Now they're like, this is really what I love to do.
Thank you.
At this time, we will, um, continue to have a comment on agenda items only. Chief.
Sorry, Mad President, Meyer Technical, we have a sitting person, Monique Frye. Morris Township, subject is, uh, L five.
Good evening, Monique Frye, Morris Township. I know last month we talked about the baseball field and, um. I think as a community, it's good for everybody to try to help come up with solutions and problems. Um, we talk a lot at these school meetings about getting more community involvement, parents involved, um, students involved, things like that. Um, some of the things that, who, that I myself have looked into, I know, um. We have a turf field. In. At McGuffey already. I'm not a sports person, so I don't know how big fields need to be for any of that. Um, but is that a possibility to have, excuse me, a makeshift baseball field? In that turf field, is that something that can be done or is even possible? Um, no, okay. Um. The, the other thing that I had thought of was, I know, I think it was you that mentioned the portable, um, mound pitching mound, or somebody had mentioned the pitching mound. I had looked into, um, looked into those. Um, they do vary greatly in price. Um, and I think the number, like four thousand dollars was thrown out. Um. The other thing was, um, there are other locations. Um, I know Carson's Bottom was mentioned last month, I can't remember. I remember there being an injury mentioned, I don't remember if it was at the Carson Bottom Field or if it was at a, uh, pleasurable field. Um, but, you know, has anybody spoken to anybody about utilizing parts we've drawn that it wasn't the field that the injury had happened at? Um, the other part, um. On purpose field, we talked about that. Um. Oh, I'm sorry, kind of got lost there with my. Notes. Per field. Okay, the, um, there was a community member that was going to be good this evening and they were not able to make it, but they did request that somebody. Throw the ideas out there and, um, one of, one of the ideas. First of all, they themselves did some legwork and made some phone calls. And, um, she did find out that Carson's Bottom is available and there are three fields in Taylorstown that are available. Um, that could be utilized for McGuffey. Um. The other point that that person has made is to perhaps raise entry fees, total fees. I don't, again, I'm not a sports person, I don't like tennis events. I don't know how much is charged at the gate for entry, um, you know, or how much room there would be to move with that. Um, I myself can't help but think that there are other options available to McGuffey besides, um.
Miss Frack, can I get you to speak up a little?
I'm trying, I know.
I'm so. Oh, I just have to ask from a couple people.
Okay. Um, I just can't help but think that, I think there are other options available for McGuffey besides raising a budget. Um, I think money can be spent more wisely, especially this year, considering where we're at financially as a district. Um. That was pretty much it. I just think that there are some other options, there's already some legwork being done. Um, and I think if you wanted contact information, if you needed contact information, I know for a fact this person would share that information with you guys. And would be more than happy to help out with. Securing those locations. Um, but that was it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mad President, our next speaker is Jessica Gumps, she is your current, um, cheer coach, but she lives in the nine, half suburbs of the district.
No, it's Jesse and I've already spoken.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll move on to, uh, uh, Kaylee Day. Plaisville, there's something is Jay eight.
Hello, my name is Kaylee Day and I'm currently a junior at McGuffey High School and on the varsity cheerleading team. I have been cheering for as long as I can remember and when I made the varsity squad my freshman year, I was ecstatic. I had always wanted to cheer for the big Friday games and when it came true, I couldn't believe it. Ever since making the squad, Coach Jess has been nothing but supportive with me and all the other girls. We all feel like we can talk to her about anything and she has become a huge role model in my life. No matter what we are faced with as a squad, Jess has always pulled through and been there for all of us. I couldn't have chosen a better coach if I tried. She is amazing and always makes it clear how much she loves all of us. This year was tougher than usual and we were all faced with many challenges. However, we all came over these rough patches as a squad and Jess never gave up. When Jess had her boys, we all immediately fell in love with them. They are so sweet and it showed us how Jess wasn't only a great coach, but also a great mom. We understand that there were times this year that she had to miss due to personal issues with her baby. She only wants what's best for all of us and we know that she did her best to still be there for us when she could. She is loving, supportive, hardworking and considerate towards all of us. I have now been with Jess for almost four years and would not want to be coached by anyone else. I have always doubted myself when it came to cheer and my ability compared to other girls. In fact, when I made the squad for the first time, I had my doubts because I was nervous I wouldn't be good enough. But Jess has made me believe in myself in a way I never thought I could. She is not only supportive of us, but also supportive of the JV and middle school squads. She makes the time every year to go to their games as well and they will even say how they hope to be coached by her in the future. Going into my senior year would not be the same without Coach Jess. When it comes to rehire, please consider the coach we love, the coach who has made countless leaps and bounds for us and would do it all again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Abigail Moreno and South Franklin Township and Jay eight.
Good evening, my name is Abigail Moreno and I'm a current eleventh grade student at McGuffey High School. I have been a varsity cheerleader for three years under the supervision, supervision of Coach Jessica Gump. I am looking forward to my senior year of school and cheer. I hope to have a good year and I know with Coach Jess that is possible. She has been such a good role model for us, not only in cheer, but also in the real world. She has always pushed for us to try new things and bond in squad. We all learned and still continue to learn valuable life lessons from her. She taught us value giving back to the community in many ways as well. Coach Jess always focuses on the positives and is so supportive. She all, she also taught us how to know what we can do, be a better and successful squad. Coach Jessica truly is a kind soul who's always willing to be our coach and a friend. She is so positive and I hope you take this letter into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Funny Moreno, South Franklin Township, Jay eight.
Hi everyone.
I just want to verify, Tanya Moreno?
Yes, thank you. Um, my name is Tanya Moreno and my daughters Abby and Ashley are current juniors. They have been cheerleaders under Coach Jess for three years. And before that, they cheered every year since they were old enough to try out. They also do track and tennis and were competitive cheerleaders for seven years. But before my girls, I had a son, Dylan, who went to McGuffey and played football under Coach Dalton for four years. I also graduated from McGuffey too many years ago. And cheered from eighth to twelfth grade. You know what you learn from observing and participating in school sports? For all these years, parents like to complain. They try to coach from the leechers, you can't please everyone. You sit and listen at a game, whether it be football, basketball, wrestling, softball, soccer, et cetera. You will hear a parent, why isn't my kid playing? Why did they call that play? Why is there things that I would have done that the coach didn't do? You're not the coach, you're supposed to be a parent, a spectator. You can have your complaints, but bring it to the coach. Coach Jess cared about our girls, their safety, their well-being, teaching them like lessons, standing up for them, pushing them to be their best. She is there to lead them, instruct them. They're not old enough, they're old enough now to know to respect whoever is in charge of them. If Coach Jess can't be there, she would have coverage for them. If you have a middle school girl teaching high school girls, it doesn't matter, you still respect them, you still pay attention to them. You as school board members know that you lead our community. There's people that don't always agree with you. There's people that complain and for that, you just take in their complaints, you do the best that you can do and you go with it. But that doesn't mean that she isn't a wonderful coach. She is there for the cheerleaders, she's there to teach them. A quality of a good cheerleader is a positive attitude, teamwork, dedication, physical strength, ability to listen. My gar, my girls were taught to pay attention and respect anyone. They need to step up, they need to have their year, they need to be responsible for their own actions. Coach Jess is there to teach them routines, she's there to teach them stuff, not to sit there and, you know, we push them, we're their parents. It's up to us to provide a good year. If your daughter didn't have a good year at cheer, maybe look at yourself, maybe look at your daughter, talk to your daughter. That doesn't come on Coach Jess, she's there to teach our girls. There have been many complaints, sometimes about costs. My girls were in competitive cheer, we paid five hundred dollars monthly to cheer, not including travel, hotels, uniforms and tuition. It's costing us time. Other girls like W., I won't say the name, in, in Sharkers Houston are already having fundraisers. They've already started their season. We had to push back our tryouts because of complaints or anything like that, it's just costing us time. It's hard enough to get tryout fees for these girls to be able to start their season. We want to go, we were ready, my girls are going to be seniors, this is their last year here at McGuffey. So I want to make it their best, we love Coach Jess and she built our program up tremendously. We have over forty or fifty girls ready to try out for varsity. Let's not postpone that, let's not scare these girls out of trying out and participating. Instead, give us our coach back, give us our time back and be the parents, as spectators, volunteers and teach them respect, dedication. But let Jess do her job and the coaching skills, techniques, spirit and teamwork. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mad President, last name person, Tracy Moore. And Wayne Township and subject Jay eight.
Hi, everybody. Hi, I just want to say you guys have picked great coaching with the basketball coach and varsity cheer coach. My daughter has been with, uh, I'm sorry, my name is Tracy Moore. Uh, my daughter Ashlyn is a sophomore this year, she has been under Coach Jess for the last couple of years. She has been under this basketball coach this year. Uh. So going on about, first about Jess, our coach, I'm concerned that there's a possibility that Coach Jess might not be hired back through lies from a couple of parents with a hidden motive. Do you realize there are girls that have cheered their entire lives and are considering not cheering their senior year because their coach might not be hired back through the lies? Which is a shame. Do you realize we are only here because of a couple of parents? Do you realize these are the same parents who don't hold their own children accountable for attendance or show respect to their coach or to their fellow cheerleaders? These same parents barely came to any winter games or wrestling matches. Do you realize we are only here because of the same parents who were only concerned about senior treat bags that caused chaos room the entire football season for these girls and us parents that were treat bags? Instead of worrying about letting the coach, coach. Let the girls, let the coach, coach, let the girls cheer. Mind you, we have never had this issue before regarding treat bags until this year, only because the parent who was complaining, her daughter is a senior. Who are fighting over cheer bags, senior cheer bags. Do you realize, um, we had over fifty girls try out last year for cheerleading for a squad of twenty-four that we kept. Instead of turning these girls away, Coach Jess decided to take on a varsity squad or JV squad to help these girls get ready for their varsity cheerleader in the future, instead of turning them away. Do you realize Coach Jess tells these girls week after week, attendance and praise are important? Do you realize Jess advises these girls how to act as ladies and how to act when they are proudly wearing their cheering uniforms? Whether in person or on social media, that is a big thing for Jess, do not act up in your cheering uniform. Do you realize when correcting these girls, whether it's stunting or tumbling, she does it in a positive, encouraging way, instead of bullying the girls like some coaches can? Coach Jess has a great policy, if you as a parent or your athlete has an issue, problem or concern, all it takes is a simple phone call and she will address your concern instead of running your mouth at a certain people. Final thought of the Edith evening, we are only here for a hidden agenda. It's really sad, I hope you can see through some of these parents who have the complaints. Um. That is it. Thank you for your time. Keep it cheer coach, keep the basketball coach.
That's it for our interview.
May we hear Coach Jess?
No, she, our policy is that district residents may not speak at school board meetings.
Even if she's a contracted employee?
That's our policy. Um. She's not a district resident. Um, Mr. Wilson, do we have anyone online who wants to participate?
We do have some people online tonight. If you're in the audience online and you wish to participate on agenda items, please use the raised hand function now. There's nobody using the raised hand function.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the February sixteen, twenty twenty-three school board meeting as submitted.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
All right.
Opposed? Sentience, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the general fund schedule of bills from February sixteenth to March sixteen, twenty twenty-three. Checks seven, seven, two, zero, seven, two, seven, seven, three, five, four, in the amount of three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars or three hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and twelve cents as submitted.
So moved second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
All right.
Opposed? Extentions, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the food service schedule of bills dated March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Checks seven, six, eight, two, two, seven, six, eight, seven, in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents as submitted.
Absolutely.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
All right.
Opposed? Sentience, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the Treasury's report from the month of February twenty twenty-three as submitted.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extensions? Motion carries. We have, um, a tenure status announcement.
Right. I have the pleasure to announce that tenure and permanent professional employee status has been earned by Lisa Bowman. She is both a high school. And a middle school Spanish one and career Spanish teacher. Uh, this occurs after three consecutive years of satisfactory teaching within the McGuffey School District. Congratulations to Lisa Bowman.
Congratulations. I need a motion to approve the anonymous donation of one hundred dollars to be applied to the student, student food service balances.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
All right.
Opposed? Extensions? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the donation from Range Resources Appalachia LLC of an overhead projector and projector screen per the terms of McGuffey School District Policy Number seven oh two. Gifts, grants and donations.
So move second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
All right.
Opposed? Extensions? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the addition of the McGuffey Middle School Student Form License Plate Frame fundraiser to the list for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year.
So move second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
All right.
Opposed? Sentience? Motion carries. Do we have need of an executive session?
Madam President, would you personnel?
I need a motion to move.
Make a motion to go to executive session.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sentience? We are in executive session at seven twenty three P M.
Executive session is.